With liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for armed forces who are serving overseas and those have lost their life in doing so. Thank you. Okay, welcome all to the November 10th Village Board Meeting. First item on the agenda is to set the dates for the December meeting. The organizational meeting will be Monday, December 1st at 7:00 PM and the board meeting will be Monday, December 1st at 7:30 PM. First up on our agenda is the fire department. Fire Department is not here, therefore it is 7:30. We will have the continuation of the public hearing for limitless taxi for taxi cab licenses. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Come on up, state your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Deborah Tapp. I live over on Oakdale Manor. And are we doing anything with taxis tonight? Is this being...
This is a hearing on the applicant's proposal for... So if you'd like to speak on that...
For another taxi.
I'm sorry?
For another taxi?
No, 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 this is... They're not a taxi, no. They are not a taxi. They are... You know what, sorry? Since it's been a month, why don't you explain it to...
Essentially, the application is for a taxi license but basically to operate a dispatching operation where, according to the application, people would call this particular enterprise and they would contact other taxi concerns in order to arrange for taxi pickup.
Okay, I wanted to clarify that before I started, that's why. We don't need one. We're a total of... We're right now three running taxis in Suffolk. There is Gene from Brothers, there's myself, Deborah Taxi, and there's Pepe Taxi. Nobody else is legally running. Anyone else doesn't belong here. Nobody else is licensed by the village. There's other people running and taking our work, but there's nobody else. There's the three of us. We don't need to call somebody else to get our work, what little there is to get. We could have somebody, all those Spring Valley taxis removed. We could have all the silver vehicles that are running around acting like taxis that are not licensed by the village. That would help, but having somebody else tell us where to go? Nobody knows where I'm driving, when I'm driving. When I answer my phone, I know where I am. I dispatch me. Gene dispatches himself. Pepe dispatches himself. We don't need anybody to tell us how to run our business. And really, where's the need for anything, for any other taxis in the village? We're not making a living.
Debbie, while I have you up here, one of the stipulations of the applicant was that she was going to have agreements with each one of the taxis in Suffolk. You're telling me that you are not...
What do I need her for?
Okay. I just want to just put that on record, that's all.
I'm in business almost 20 years.
Mm-hmm, okay.
What I need is the ones that are not licensed by Suffolk to be out of here. I don't need her.
Okay.
I don't think anybody else does.
Mayor, if I may ask you a question. Has the applicant reached out to you at all?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
And by the way, I'm not sure if Pepe, but we're all here.
Okay.
All three of us.
Thank you. Thanks, Debbie. Would anyone else like to speak?
Jim Janatino. Has the applicant shown up since the first time?
No.
I guess she's not interested in this...
She's not here tonight, correct? The applicant is not...
She wasn't here last month either.
No.
I think it speaks for itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, my name is Jean Florial. I'm owner of Brothers Taxi. I've been running this on the town for more than 22 years. And my problem, my most problem is it's not more taxi. It is to get the illegal cab out of Suffolk. Because anytime we... There's somebody call us before we get downtown and somebody take the call. And then sometime they use our name. They say, "Oh, Brothers send me." Or, "Deborah send me." And we don't even know these people, you know? It's a big problem. If you could help us with that, that would be great. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? How many cars do you have presently?
Two cars.
Two? Okay.
Yes.
And the applicant did not reach out to you?
No.
At all?
No.
And you would not be interested in something like that, correct?
We don't have business for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Mayor, I don't know if it's appropriate now or maybe later when the chief speaks. Can he address the issue of the taxi enforcement? Because obviously that's a concern of all the existing taxis here.
Mr. Burrow, what we've done in the last month, we've, I think, charged 10. 10 taxis. So we're definitely on it. It's just the amount of getting people to get out there and to, you know, flag them down. I think it's 10 in the last month we've had. So we're definitely on it. I spoke to Debbie many times about it, so...
Do you know offhand if the 10 that you charged were multiple violations?
Repeat offenders.
If it was 10 we had, I can tell you I don't know. I just know we charged 10. I didn't break it down that in depth, but I just know there was 10.
I believe there was repeat offenders, I was told by the officers.
Okay, and it's possible. I can use the phone, I can just pull the records up. I just know it was 10 and we're going to continue it.
Thank you.
You want to talk again? I mean, if you want to. Come up to the microphone.
I was trying to avoid the mic.
That's okay.
Can we get a letter sent out to the companies that are found in Suffolk, in the village? And we have companies working with Getrex. We have so many of them. And then we have the individuals that live in the village.
Okay, so you want... You want a list of the ones that actually have licenses in the village? Or you know that already?
I know who's where.
Yeah, so what do you want? I'm not get... I'm confused. What list do you want?
There's companies like Latina American.
Okay.
Getrix. Spirit.
Yeah, you know what I think is a good idea, Debbie? I think you're on the right path. I think we can look at those violations, the summonses that you gave, Clark. And we can send letters out stating the local law here in Suffolk with regards to having, you know, picking up fares here in the village.
But you have found that we charged them and we gave them information why they were charged, particularly when they went to court. So that part of it, the ones who've gotten no, and I know that the other one...
Okay, so maybe we could look at that list and see who's not on there then, and we'll go from there.
We also have four in the village that are working the village. We don't want them.
Okay. Thanks, Debbie.
Move to close. If there's nobody else, move to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, with regards to the applicant, you know, I think that, as some of our residents have stated, I think not having the applicant here certainly doesn't give us the perspective of what they're trying to accomplish. And in their application, they state that they are going to be working with the taxis who are in the village, but also part of the application was to bring in others from outside of the village, which is not according to what our local law is here in Suffolk. So for me, I just believe that we don't have a need or a calling for it. Our licensed cab companies are not doing business with this woman. Therefore, I don't believe that there's a need to bring a dispatcher in here for such a small amount of taxi cab owners and to take away from their livelihood, I think, is not fair at this point. They've been doing fine for many, many years without them. And I would say that at this time, it's just not a need here in the village.
What I would suggest, if the board agrees, is that I think I have a sense of what the board would like to do. I would suggest that perhaps I can write up a draft decision for the board to consider at either the December or January meeting.
Oh, for going forward?
Yeah.
Okay, but...
I mean, no, no, no. On this particular application, rather than just have a motion, since we have an application here and there are a number of issues involved, what I would suggest is that I write up a draft decision for the board to consider.
Okay.
All right? And then that way, we have something that has findings of fact and so forth in case anybody, the applicant in particular, is not happy with it and wishes to challenge it.
Okay. Did any of the other board members want to speak?
No.
With regards? No?
I would make a motion. That's what you're looking for, Terry, I guess? A motion for you to prepare?
I don't even need a motion. I mean, I think I'll just prepare a draft resolution, circulate it to the board. I don't know if you want to consider something like that at the December meeting or if you want to go over to January, but whatever your preference is.
Okay, so you want us to hold it over?
Yeah.
Okay.
Another to close public hearing and I'll prepare a draft decision.
Okay. So would you want a motion to hold it over?
No, you closed the public hearing, so we're fine.
Okay, we're fine. Okay, so we'll... Terry, we'll prepare a decision on it and we will have that at the either December or January meeting.
Whatever your preferences.
Whatever the board's preferences.
I don't know if it's... Okay, so if you go out to taxes, it may be worth while. If you guys want me to look into it, I just didn't want to jump out of town with this, but one of the things we may be able to do is maybe put a sticker or placard in the vehicles that are registered in the village.
Right.
In the back so at least we'll know. I know there's only few, but it's just sometimes it is confusing. We don't really know. You know, the officer's not going to know.
And we have new officers, yeah. We talked about this at the last board meeting.
We did. Maybe just, if you don't mind, maybe I'll just look at the local law, see if we can put something in about, you know, getting a placard in each car that's owned by whoever is registered to the village has a placard. Everybody else, it's just going to be a little easier for the officers to identify.
Well, there's only three companies. It shouldn't be too hard to...
No, no, it's... No, no, Matt, I know that what happens is, Matt, it does. The officers, even some of them don't even know. They're not familiar with any of them. Some of them have marked someone. It's just, it's very confusing for the amount of taxis that go through.
Except for Debbie's.
So I'm just thinking, it's just, and if we start getting more, it's the way to go. I'm just being honest with you.
And we also, Clark, we also, you know, part of the local law is that they're supposed to have, I don't know, do you call that signage?
Lettering.
Lettering on their vehicles?
Right, no, we know that.
So that's something else that we really need to start enforcing as well because I think that also will help.
You got to understand, and also during the daytime, we are busy a lot of times, daytimes. The guys have to try to keep an eye on it, but there's other things going on. That's why specifically I'd recommend you have some parameters so we can go after them a little easier for us also.
Yeah, anything that helps to remedy the situation, I think, is a great idea.
All right, I'll take a look and just bring it back. I just want to make sure you guys are okay with it.
Thanks, Clark. Okay. What time is it?
It's time. 7:45.
Okay, so we're going to move on to our next public hearing, and that is to amend the noise ordinance. Terry?
Yeah, sure. For whatever reason, the various provisions in the noise law had different times applicable. So you would go to one section, it would say you could only do construction during a certain period of time, you could only mow your lawn during a different time and so forth. So this amendment basically makes the time restrictions consistent, as well as strangely, they defined weekend, or weekday rather, to include Saturdays. So the ordinance needed a little bit of help. So at this point, we've made it so that the times are consistent and you can only use or create these various noises between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM on weekdays and 10:00 AM and 8:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays. So it's a little more restrictive and consistent.
Is there anyone who would like to speak?
I just have one more question.
Sure.
I just think you ought to consider not having large construction projects working on a Sunday. Why don't you leave Sunday for residents to do their different little projects? I mean, in a residential area, if you've got somebody building a house and they're jackhammering from 10:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night, you're not going to really appreciate it if it's next door to your house. I think six days a week is probably good enough for them to work heavy construction.
You know, it's of course up to the board, but the construction would be not only, as you're referring to, Jim, a large construction project, but it would also be the individual who's, you know, building a deck or something like that.
No, no, I don't have a problem with that. I'm talking about a large company.
I understand, but we've got to do it across the board. You can't make a distinction.
In other words, if you were building a deck on your house and you were doing it yourself, you're off on the weekends, not you in particular, but you know what I'm saying?
No, I understand what you're trying to say.
So you're building your deck on the weekends because you work during the week, you then too would lose your Sunday to do the work, that kind of thing.
Not if you reword it and say residents can do certain...
Jim, you know you can't do that.
Why can't you? One is commercial and one is private.
Residents can make a lot of noise, but outside people can't?
Because one is a commercial enterprise and you're a resident.
No. But by the way, we do, you know, this is not to the exclusion of the other provisions in the noise law that you can't create loud and disturbing noises. In other words, there's an absolute prohibition against certain activities during certain times, but in addition to that, you can never create loud and disturbing noises.
So then you got to go by decibels?
No, no, no. We're relying more on the amorphous thing. We do have decibels in certain things, but no. It's just loud of a noise of a loud and disturbing nature.
I just thought it would be better to keep commercial out of the village on Sunday.
Well, you know what, this is, Jim, this is kind of tinkering with an existing law and it was answering a particular problem that had been reported to the mayor. So I mean, if we're making these adjustments and if it turns out that there is a problem with loud construction, we can change it again. I mean, it's...
Well, I think that was the original complaint, if I'm not mistaken.
No.
Weren't they jackhammering up on Pavilion?
No, it was not on a Sunday. It was at 6:00, 7:00 on a Saturday morning.
Yeah, the original complaint was a Saturday.
That was Saturday. I've had no complaints for Sundays. I don't know the construction really works on Sundays. Yeah. Yeah. I haven't got any of those complaints. But again, like Terry said, should that begin to occur, that's something definitely we could revisit. Okay, would anybody else like to speak? Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And what do we call on this?
Well, it's a local law to...
What number?
I don't do numbers.
Jenny, do we have a number?
Yes, none.
Nine, okay. Local law number nine. Board?
Amending Chapter 175 of the Code of the Village of Suffolk regarding noise regulations. So we're going to...
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Not quite so.
Okay, we will move on to culture and recreation. It is not quite 7:55. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Kathy. I'll announce it after...
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board. A few things that we have on the agenda. I passed them down up there already. Tomorrow, Tuesday, November 11th, we have our Veterans Day Parade, and it will be starting at 11:00. Lineup will be here in Village Hall starting at 10:30 in the morning. So we look forward to everybody attending that tomorrow. We have the next Dare Dance, Friday, November 14th. It'll be at 7:00 in the community center. We have two coin drives coming up. We've got the American Legion on Saturday, November 15th, and starts at 10:00 AM. And then another coin drive on Saturday, November 22nd with the Lions Club, also at 10:00 AM. Previously at the workshop, we had a lead event coming up. That event has now been canceled, so that won't be on your agenda this evening. And a couple of things that are coming up after November. We've got the parade and the tree lighting on Saturday, December 6th. We're very excited about that. We're working with a lot of groups in the community. They're donating a lot of their materials, a lot of their time. So it's going to be a great event on Saturday, December 6th, starting at 5:00 PM. We've got the Pearl Harbor Ceremony here in the auditorium. That'll be on Sunday, December 7th at 2:00 PM. We've got the Hoop Sheet with the Mawa Elks on Saturday, December 13th, the time we still have to determine. We've got the Dare Tour Drive with Chief Osborne on December 18th to the 21st in the community center. And then we've got the Hanukkah Memorial Lighting on Wednesday, December 17th over at the Park and the gazebo. I think that's it.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, grant writer. Fred.
Good evening, Board. About two and a half weeks ago, we actually did submit the paperwork for the $65,000 water well grant with the Dormitory Authority of New York State. A couple of questions have come back, real simple ones, and both Charles, Michael Janito, and myself are answering those. And then they'll be getting a contract to us to sign, actually. Last year, we were made a Tree City USA. We were designated that by the Arbor Day Foundation. That application was basically 99% put together and should be in the mail on Friday. It will just require a signature of the mayor between now and then on the document itself, and then I can submit that. So I'll get that over to you. The Clifford Theater, they did Hello, Dolly last year. And this was a grant from Ellen Jaffe. It was $2,000. All of that paperwork is now together. I just need one more signature from you as well, and then I can submit that one by the end of the week. Lastly, community development block grant, which is HUD money, which is disseminated by the Rockland County Office of Community Development. That application for 2015 will be due at the end of January. And in order to submit an application, the village has to form, as it has every year, a citizen advisory committee. That committee then comes up with varying ideas for an application or a project within the village, and then we make that recommendation to the board, and then I'll complete the application and submit it to them by the end of January. The people they want on the board...
Do you want me to appoint them now?
Oh, sure, you can point that.
Yeah, we'll just do it now, Virginia, right?
Okay. Okay. So I will appoint to the 2014-15 Citizen Advisory Committee. Our advisors will be Fred Rela and Charles Sawicki. And our committee members will be Dorothy McClintock, Frances Glick, John Paul Malfetta, Ernie Bosco, and Charlie Rogers. Motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Yeah, just so you know too, Frances is a new member this year. She has not been on the board.
I see that, that's great.
Right. And Ernie Bosco and John Paul just joined the board last year. So this is their second year on there.
Great group. Thanks, Fred. Okay, we have a couple more minutes to our public hearing. Terry, do you have anything?
No.
Nothing? Police Department, Chief Osborne.
We just have a couple of updates. We finished up hockey. We had 14 teams and 170 players this past first season. We had a great championship Saturday, big barbecue, trying to work that great. And we have a tour drive that's going very well. We have a lot of volunteers in the village helping us out already. And we made 30 arrests last month, including, top of that, 10 taxis, 10 village ordinance arrests for illegal taxis operating in the village. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, we still have another minute. Charles?
Good evening, Mayor and the Board. I am requesting payment authorization for application of payment number 6, the amount at $224,481.20 to Northeast Remsco Construction for the general construction portion of the wastewater treatment plant digester upgrade project. The total amount paid to the contractor, including this payment, is $854,943.95. The contract amount is $1,089,000.
So moved.
Mr. Janito is aware of the payment?
Yes.
And that's all? Been run through him already?
Yes, I have.
Second.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Thank you, that's it.
Forgot your name for a minute, Matt. Okay, it is 7:55. We are going to open the public hearing for three-hour parking on Lafayette Avenue. However, it has come to my attention right before the meeting that a survey was done with regards to three-hour parking on Lafayette Avenue. And the board does not have the survey, and we don't have the benefit of actually reading about what it showed with extending to three-hour parking on Lafayette Avenue. So it was asked by Scott Sheddler and the chief, who is very interested also in looking at that survey, to hold off on voting tonight on the three-hour parking on Lafayette until we've actually had the benefit of all of the information. So I think that's a great idea. However, keeping that in mind, I will open the public hearing and hear any comments or concerns. I will be holding it over until the next meeting so that we may be able to have the benefit of all the information before we take a vote on it. So if you want to reserve your comment until then, until we can share all of that information with you as well, that's fine. But if anybody would like to speak tonight, please come up to the microphone.
That survey was done by the parking authority?
Yes, yes. And I was just made aware of it right before the meeting, thanks to the chief. So... Okay, so can I have a motion to hold over continuation of the public hearing until...
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay. Audience participation, if you'd like to spleek, spleek, spleek. Please come up to the microphone. It's been a long day. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. We don't need a motion, we'll just move on. Okay, Village Clerk.
Oh, no one's speaking?
No. Nobody has anything to say.
The first thing we have to do is set a public hearing for fees for the snow plowing operators. We could have it November 1st.
December the 1st? December 1st. We will do it at, let's see, 7:30 we're starting, so 7:40?
7:40. Somebody make a motion?
I need a motion to set the public hearing for the snow plow operators' fees.
So moved.[1621.54]
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it'll be 7:40, is that, Matt?
7:40.
7:40, December 1st, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
We've come up with the idea, Mayor, that we're going to be charging for the use of our rooms at the village hall and up at Leo Leiden.
Yeah, let me just, let me say a few words. We have been looking at the fees that are being charged for the use of our facilities, and we found they have not been updated in quite some time, so I asked Kathy and Mike Janito to come together with me so that we can actually look at what those fees were and kind of update them as they have not been raised in quite some time. So what we're proposing for the community room, which is upstairs in Village Hall, we're proposing a nonprofit resident rate, a personal resident rate for personal use, and a personal non-resident for-profit rate, so those are the three categories that we've broken them down into. For the community room, it will be $50 for the community room, a $25 cleanup fee, and $25 for utilities. For the personal resident rate, it will be $75, 25 cleanup and 25 utilities, and for a personal non-resident for-profit will be $100, $50 cleanup and 25 utilities. For the Leo Leiden, nonprofit resident will be $50 for the room, 25 cleanup, $40 for utilities. Personal resident would be $200 for the room, $25 cleanup and $40 utilities. Personal non-resident and for-profit will be $250, $25 cleanup and $40 for utilities. The auditorium, which here, would be nonprofit resident, $100 and $40 utilities, personal resident, $135 and $40 for utilities, personal non-resident for-profit, $175 and $40 utilities. For the community center, nonprofit resident will be $50 per hour, a $50 cleanup and $75 for utilities. For personal resident, $100 per hour, a $50 cleanup and $75 for utilities, and for personal non-resident for-profit, $125 per hour, $50 cleanup and $75 utilities. Now, what we have done...
I think that's a typo, I think that should be $25. Where are they?
Yes, you're correct. Under the, under the community room, it's $25 for all cleanup, it says 50, I think it was a typo. I just would like to say that Kathy had gone to other municipalities, we looked at what the other municipalities are charging, we wanted to keep in line with that, and I think we came up with a good solution for, for the, for the rooms to be used and for a little bit of revenue for the village.
Do we know what overall rate increase this represents, or over existing rates?
Um, yeah, I believe the Leo Leiden was $25. There was no cleanup, there was no utilities charged on any of the, any of the locations, Matt. There was just a, a flat one-time, you know, fee for the room. I believe it was $50 for the Leiden, I believe it was, I'm sorry, $25 for the Leiden, $20, $25 for the community room, $75 for the auditorium, and I don't, I don't, I don't think there was ever a number for the community center.
We never rented it.
Yeah, we didn't rent it.
Do we know what we're basing the utility charges on?
Um, that's just basically a usage per time type, so we're basing it on a two-hour time period, and, you know, that's just a round number that we came up with, with what we're charged from Orange and Rockland.
Mayor, can I ask you something?
Sure.
Just, if, if, let's just argue and say, if the Democratic Committee wanted to have a meeting, this applies to them, Republican Committee wanted to have a meeting, is that what, is that part of this?
That would be the nonprofits.
Yeah.
Yes.
So what they were getting for nothing for 100 years, now you're going to ask them for $100 to rent a room?
For the auditorium?
For, for anything, Leo P. Leiden?
Yeah, I mean, the fact of the matter is, Frank, is that, you know, the, some of these meetings go on for hours, and, you know, it's staffing, it's utilities, it's the cleanup of the staffing, it's, you know, the, the village has been absorbing that for many, many years now, and quite frankly, a lot of times when these rooms or buildings are used, there's damage, there's, you know, a cleanup, there's, you know, things that happen that the village absorbs the cost of, so, you know, I think my feeling is, is if you're going to use the room, you know, it's got, it's got to be, it's got to be paid for somehow or another, and, I mean, we can't have all these organizations and all of these private people using our rooms and the taxpayers absorbing the bill on it.
Mayor, I would like to be able to kind of set side by side the current rates versus what you're proposing, what's being proposed. I think it might be appropriate that we discuss this at a workshop before we move to adopt it. It doesn't require a public hearing, I'm assuming, correct?
No, it's by resolution. Just so that you know, Matt, the community room and the Leiden were $25, okay? The community center had no, no rates on it, and the auditorium was $75.
Yeah, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be charging, I just think, rather than...
Right. What we did was we based it on looking at, like I said, the other municipalities and what they're charging, and we're actually a little bit under.
Okay. I just, I just think I'd like to...
That's not a problem, we can absolutely do that. And I can ask Kathy, if you don't mind, if you could make copies of all of the different municipalities that we looked at, and make copies reach one of the trustees and pack them in their boxes, and then we can discuss it at the next board meeting. I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
Yes? Everybody in agreement?
Yeah.
Yes, 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 okay. Alrighty, moving along.
Does that mean it's done?
We have one more thing.
Hi, Mayor.
We have, by November 14th, we have to send over to the county our unpaid taxes, and tonight, we're, unpaid taxes are $187,643.74.
Not me.
I need a motion, and you both will have to sign it, okay?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. It's in my pocket, I don't have to worry about it.
So each of you, the trustees, before you leave tonight, please sign these three.
Sure. Okay, Finance Department, Barbara is on vacation, so we are going to, they're asking to adopt a procurement policy, Terry's going to explain.
Sure. The village, of course, has had a procurement policy for quite a few years. This is merely, this is merely an update to reflect the change in the general municipal law...
She's got the paper right there. She with the yellow paper?
That, that has increased the bidding limits, so that it now reflects, consistent with the general municipal law, that competitive bidding is required for purchase contracts over $20,000 and for public works projects over $35,000. We have various levels for which quotations are required, even if it's not to be bid, so for example, for $3,000 to $19,999 for purchase contracts, there has to be three written proposals, and similarly, for public works projects that are less than the bid limit, there have to be three written proposals. So again, this is just merely an update.
Okay, do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes, so moved. Okay, the next, the, Mike Janito is requesting to approve services of Carmella Pantano. Carmella will be coming in to do some finance work that Barbara does not have knowledge of and is needed in the finance office. It will be a temporary basis and not to exceed $9,000, and he'd like to transfer that $9,000 from the treasurer's personal services line to the treasurer's contractual cost line.
This is an independent contract.
And it is an independent contractor.
And this is a CPA, is it?
Yes, and this is in response to the internal investigation.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
With the understanding that Mr. Janito indicated the money is available for transfer?
It is.
Not an issue as to where it's coming from?
It is, yes, it is, it's just, it's there, it needs just to be transferred.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mann?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. Trustees, do we have anything?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mann.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that tonight marks the last of thousands of meetings that I have attended over a career of 31 years in elective public office. Throughout that time, whether on the village board or the county legislature, I have received wonderful support from the citizens of Suffering. To that, I am extremely grateful. Throughout these last 16 years on the village board, I have interacted with our workforce and have always been treated with great respect. I've always, excuse me, I've always taken great pride in the fact that anyone entering village hall is met by someone whose attitude is, "I'm here to help solve your problem." I was a municipal consultant and have been in dozens of village and town halls, you'll never find a better treatment than you receive right here in Suffering. I will also want to thank my colleagues on the current village's board. This last year has been a pleasure for me, working in a bipartisan fashion in the interest of the village. Lastly, I called the victors in this election last Wednesday night to congratulate them. I know they share my desire to see our village succeed, and I wish them well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack, and I'd like to say, this year has definitely been a wonderful year for this board, and the bipartisan relationship that we shared really was a pleasant one, and it was, has always been a pleasure to serve with you on the board, and I personally thank you for all that you've done for this village.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, do any of the other trustees have anything?
No.
I would just, a time of adjournment, if I could be recognized at that time, when we're ready for adjournment.
A time of adjournment, yeah. Okay, I just have one more appointment, Darrell Schiller, we have a unexpired term by, that is, of Ron Levine, we need to fill the unexpired term, it will expire December 5th of 2016. We have someone who just has moved into the village and very eager to be a part of our community and get involved, Darrell Schiller, and he has graciously accepted to serve on that board, so I would like to appoint Darrell Schiller to our sewer grievance board, and I do not need confirmation. Okay, Mr. Byrne?
I thought you said you did.
I do not need confirmation.
Just in the last two weeks, the Village of Suffering lost a longtime resident of the village and a dedicated gentleman who served the, served Sacred Heart Church for many, many years as its deacon, Deacon Joseph Witt, and I just thought it appropriate that, given his years of service to the church and the community as a whole, and his longtime, all of his kids went to school here, many of them are still here, just a great family, and he was a great man, so I would just like to move to adjourn this meeting in his honor and request that a copy of the, of the minutes when prepared be sent to the family. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a nice evening, everyone.